This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. It's now seven o'clock. I'll call this regular meeting of council to order. Here at the Social Scene in Victoria Beach, I respectfully acknowledge that we are meeting here on Treaty One territory, the traditional homeland of the Anishinaabe, Cree, and Assiniboine, Dakota, and Dene people, and the homeland of the Red River Métis. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past, and we dedicate ourselves to find ways as we move forward in partnership with First Nations and Métis communities in the spirit of collaboration and reconciliation. As always, thank you to Frank for our setup and takedown of our meetings here at the Social Scene. Introductions around the table, all sort of my far left.
Ian Chadzie, councillor. Steve Axtony. Lord Bruce Deale.
Penny McMorris, mayor.
Erwin Kumpke.
Graham Randall.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. It resolved, the agenda be adopted and presented. May I have a mover? Thank you, Ian, second. Thank you, Steve. Any additions, gentlemen? Steve?
I would just like to add a discussion for an apology to the BBC O A.
Okay. Does council agree with this? Addition to the agenda? All right, Karen, nothing further? All those in favor? Karen? Thank you. All right, we are moving on to the minutes. We have resolved the minutes of August 19th, 2025, regular meeting of council be adopted and presented. May I have a mover, please? Thank you, Ian, second. Thanks, Steve. Any further discussion, or any discussion, I should say, on the minutes? All right, hearing none? All those in favor? Karen, thank you. All right, we are moving into our delegations. And tonight, we have several, we have up to 10. You're all here. A reminder that delegations have 10 minutes to speak, and it would be appreciated if we could get a hard copy or an email of your presentation. We'll remind all of you who are speaking and all of you who are listening that council expects respectful behavior from everyone in attendance. So please, no comments or actions from the floor while people are speaking. With the exception of our first delegation, you've all signed up to speak to private structures on public land. So we ask that you stick to that topic, and we'll remind you at the nine-minute mark if necessary. And council may have some questions for you after your presentation. So our first delegation is MP James Bazan, who represents our riding of Selkirk, Inner Lake Eastman in the House of Commons, and he has done so since 2004. He's currently the Conservative Shadow Minister for National Defense. Some of you may have seen us outside earlier. Our fire department was taking photos with Mr. Bazan, who has been working with Global Medic, which is an amazing humanitarian relief organization who deliver assistance around the world when and wherever needed. Global Medic reached out to Mr. Bazan and arranged the donation and delivery of at least 50 portable firefighting skids to many fire departments, First Nations, and municipalities. Guardline shipped these for free from Edmonton. And so on behalf of our fire department, our residents, and our council, James, thank you so much for thinking of us and including us in this generous offer. And thank you for taking photos with our guys outside. I will now turn the volume up.
You have to click the button.
Look it up. Okay, thank you. And indeed, a pleasure to be able to join all of you today. I know you've got a busy schedule and cattled by the crowd. And I think the last time I attended a council meeting, I was well attended as well. There were many presentations to be made. So just on Global Medic. The shadow actually goes to Global Medic. They were able to organize this donation. All these slips are made in Edmonton. I reached out to Guardline, seeing rural saying who was the president of Global Medic, reached out to me. And we've worked on numerous other activities providing humanitarian relief in other countries. So it was kind of unique for Global Medic to say, okay, we don't want to be something to help Manitoba fires. Of course, we just had the losses of human life in Maclavonie. And said, okay, how do we get these to you? Where can we get them delivered? And then '72, we're actually delivered to Manitoba and right across the province. But priority, in my mind, was at that point in time was to make sure we got them here where there was fire in the region and want to make sure that your fire departments, your volunteers, had the equipment they need to respond quickly. So it was something that, if you guys have a chance, make sure you send those letter of thanks to Global Medic and to Guardline stepping up, who did this as a back call, coming back and forth between Edmonton. And I think that ended up doing four drop holds. So that's a huge effort. So I'm heading back to Ottawa. Go back in session on the 15th. I'll be back on the 13th. And I always like to reach out and try to get around to as many municipalities and PBs as I possibly can to hear what's going on in the area. What are the issues that I should be aware of? So I'm looking for feedback coming back from you as council. And particularly with Victoria Beach. And in the past, we've talked about the quality of Lake Wannapay, concerns that we have there, whether or not enough is being done to support the communities around the lake in mitigation, as well as working with those who are interested in saving the lake. So again, looking for some feedback. The Numeo, the main research vessel that we use as a platform for Lake Wannapay research program, of course, just turned 50 this year. So it's still going strong. But I think there needs to be some downstream vision as to what replaces it when the ship reaches its end of lake. You know, we talked with Canadian, Royal Canadian Navy. Once we're hitting 40 years, it's getting to be too far. And this whole Kofur vessel, that 50, but it's still doing its job and it's doing it well. And they have done a number of updates and improvements to it. Maybe there's more that can be done. But regardless, looking forward to getting some feedback from council. Any questions that you have with me, especially as we head back into the session? Definitely power away.
Gentlemen? Go ahead, Steve.
We've spoken about this years ago. But I'm wondering, and you can get back to me because I forgot. But I'm wondering if the federal government is sort of looking at the, or considering a biological solution to the zebra mussel infestation?
I'm sure that there's a number of things that have been talked about. And I've had a number of different companies and organizations make recommendations on how we can deal with it. If there is a viable solution, I think it'd be getting used in the Great Lakes now. And I haven't seen anything to that matter yet, or in the United States, if that becomes available. And I think people definitely want to look at deploying here on how we deal with something as invasive as zebra mussels. If anybody hears anything, let me know.
All right, thanks. Ian, did you have a question? Gentlemen, go ahead.
Last year, we saw the city of Wannapay dump millions of litres into the Red River, which ended up in our lake. If that were a private company, wouldn't the federal government sue their clients off? But they don't seem to be doing anything against the city.
Yeah, and I did actually put out a statement on that when it happened. I expected that the federal government should have taken action in pursuing, from the standpoint, one, helping the city of Wannapay ensure that this doesn't happen again. But two, is that there needs to be some accountability here. And how long was that actually taking? They talk about 97 swimming pool falls of pure raw sewage being dumped into the Red River, which ended up in our beautiful lake. And I'm still not convinced that enough was done to hold the city to account, either from the federal or provincial levels, to tell you the truth. It seemed like things sometimes happen accidentally. But they already had one lake. They knew that the infrastructure was failing. And they didn't do anything to stop this from happening and allowed it to go on for as long as it did. So, you know, not that type, want to see, you know, overly zealous, you know, people within environment Canada went out there and finding municipalities. But there needs to be some level of accountability and action taken at municipal level when you're looking at a major source of pollution that happens year in and year out. Every time the north-end water treatment facility gets overrun and they do emergency dumps. But this was, you know, pure BS. And something that should never have been allowed to happen.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just want to get your thoughts on the tariff. How liberals are handling that?
You mean all those down?
Well, sometimes they're up, sometimes they're down.
Well, the reaction to drop all of our tariffs on everything under the Free Trade Agreement is counter to what we were told during the election. And I spent a week in Washington in July, meeting with congressional leaders in both the House and over in the Senate, as well as think tanks, trying to get inside and, you know, what the administration is dealing with. There's no question that the counterdancing, well, the retaliatory tariffs just infuriated the administration even more. There's no question that it also made it less competitive for a number of our manufacturers. And you can see that now in the job numbers, in the export numbers, that the tit for tat wasn't necessarily, hadn't had the impact that we wanted. But if you're going to do something, carry through with it. We believe that, as conservatives, definitely the retaliatory tariffs was a way to get the administration's attention. If we're going to drop it, then let's at least get something for that. We got nothing. You know, the discussions around security, around defense, around more collaboration on those issues. Again, we're doing that and should be doing it. But what are we getting back from the United States on this? And Trump hasn't given us anything at all. And meanwhile, our steel workers, especially here in Selkirk, that is the largest single private employer in the riding, they're concerned. I've been meeting with them. There's no doubt that our manufacturing base in the riding across the country is suffering. The auto industry's in potential, in major withdrawal and downfall if Trump gets his way. So I think that we have to continue to be vigilant here. And if we're going to deal with the administration in an aggressive way, then you better get aggressive action and recourse from the Americans on this, and that hasn't happened. So we'll continue to get back into session, put the pressure on government to get something back for Canada. Just don't keep giving it away.
I agree. Thank you, James. Back to a local issue. We've been writing margins, struggling with our provincial administration to find some way to restate, reinstate our first responder group out here that had to be disbanded a few years ago. To the credit of the provincial administration, we are making progress. I'd just like to hear that it's on your federal radar as well to do what you can to help promote the reinstatement of our first responders. This is only set of rules. They blow the bar, maybe not quite low enough, but it's maybe close enough. So we'll be working towards that.
So the question is, are they providing training opportunities to bring first responders in the area up to that new bar?
The training opportunities are there. It's just that they were way too expensive for volunteers to come with. So they've scaled that down to a more affordable level. But it would be comforting to know that we have some, that it's on the federal radar as well.
Yeah, I tend not to get too involved in provincial jurisdiction. So, but I do appreciate you bringing this to my attention. Because I, I'll say this, I got involved in politics back in 2004 because I believed that rural Manitoba shouldn't be treated, or rural Canada for that matter, should be treated as second-class incidents to urban centers. There's no doubt that amenities in urban life are attractive. But when it comes to our safety, our health, and our welfare, we've got to have the same services provided here as anywhere else in the province. And so if there's anything that I can do to help with that, whether it comes through on the training side, whether it comes through in certification, maybe some national standards that would, in some way, provide for those volunteers that are in the local rural communities, often isolated rural communities where there is no other options, then I would definitely be there to help support that. But you're the first one to bring this up to my attention for quite some time, actually.
Well, it needs to be, everybody needs to be reminded of it from time to time. So thank you.
Thank you.
A question on the RCMP, James.
Yes.
They're very much in need of new employees, very scarce in the communities. Is there any push to hire more RCMP to get them out across the country as well in Manitoba?
So this is something that's been on our radar for a long time, is that we haven't been recruiting enough. Even when they doubled up the number of people that could go through Depot, over half of them are grabbed up for the problems in British Columbia, every rotation. We got way too many large urban centers in British Columbia that rely on the RCMP to provide your service. And why do they do that? Because it's cheap. And so you have Absurd, Surrey, Chilliwack, and one of these centers now, Richmond, just outside of Vancouver, which you would think, you know, 100,000-plus people, that they would have their own municipal police force. You guys have your own municipal police force, you agree? And so all those recruits are all ending up in the greater Vancouver area. And it is at the detriment to the rest of the country. And so where we do provincial contracts and municipal contracts in, you know, Manitoba, Saskatchewan, Alberta, as well as one in Canada, their numbers are great. At any given point in time here in our region, we are over a position shortage just because of the regular cycle of people that are retiring, on medical leave, maternity leave, stress leave. And so because of that, we aren't getting the same policing that we should in our rural communities. The liberals have now changed the rules of being able to go into Depot as, you know, people applying straight on grade 12 is no longer probably allowed. They're expecting people to have a degree, preferably in criminality, or justice. And so they're hoping to improve the quality of the recruit, but they're going to actually reduce the pool on who's going to be able to serve. And that in itself is detrimental to provincial and municipal policing. The upside of that, though, is that the RCMP has a federal national security mandate, which they right now are inadequate trained on and have been struggling to provide proper national security, especially as we enter this new time of, you know, foreign espionage, foreign interference, and transnational repression. So that issue is best dealt with through the RCMP. But that means that they either need to take up a second level of training on that or just concentrate on their national mandate and provinces and municipalities start looking at their own policing as they do back in Ontario. And so that is the discussion that's taking place. These are 25-year provincial contracts, and we're 15 years into it now. And so, and Canada province and municipalities are paying to it, be able to continue to afford it. When in reality, if we need more people, we ought to hire more than the current allotment just to make up for those that currently are unable to provide the service.
Agreed, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Anything Manitoba-specific that you're working on that would be of interest to our residents?
Well, maybe not some, maybe some of the property owners here are also farmers. But so I'm working quite diligently right now and trying to get a recovery program for the drought that we experienced. Even though it's been wet through most of August, it came too late for our crops, pushy hay. And so our livestock industry, in particular, those farmers and ranchers are struggling to find enough feed, even though pastures definitely have been extended. I still do some custom greasing. Thanks to the rains, I thought I was going to send cattle home in August, but we'll be able to carry it through till October now. But where they're going, they're still looking for enough feed to feed them, as well as hopefully not have to liquidate or downsize their herds to match what feed supplies are. In that case, then I've already asked the minister to provide extra deferral on any breeding stock that has to get sold just to match winter feed supplies with the herd that they have.
All right. Go ahead, Ian.
Just one more. Just wondering if you're going to have a leadership review this year or next year?
Look, we're going to be going into delegate selection meetings that should be taking place through the fall. You know, I'm very supportive of our leader. I believe that getting back in the house is important to our overall fate. You know, I think there's no question that Prime Minister Cardy will have a nice honeymoon, especially with the media, the public. But time will tell where that ends up. You know, I compare what happened to Pierre, where he did lose his own seat, which was a special circumstance with the changes within his riding, the Willoughby leader not being able to put the time into the riding, that must have been a safe ride to start with. But he, I believe that what happened is very similar to what happened under Harvard. Lost no four people, culled for his head, came back, went, survived the review, and came back and became Prime Minister. And I think that Prime Minister is my lifeline. So I believe that the same will be true for Pierre. You know, definitely, he has an opportunity here to come back. He's had to learn from, lessons from that last campaign. I think if you watch, he's changed some of his tactics. But at the same time, we do have the responsibility as the official opposition and the Prime Minister of Canada to hold the government to account and continue until the next election. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and anytime that you guys have anything, I'll maybe phone call away.
I know you are. Thank you so much. All right, thank you very much. Our first presenter is Stuart Juist, please.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. First of all, I'd like to correct perhaps a false impression left by Penny McMorris when she answered a question by Steve Axworthy about the revetment on Arthur Beach. Penny, you said the judge said "build it." Actually, that's not quite correct. He said to "complete it." The reason to complete it was that it was an unsafe structure. And while the matter was being adjudicated, basically, it should be built in order that erosion not take place. So it's not simply "build it," like, oh, good thing. Rather, it had to be done. Second, okay, regarding the shoreline advisory committee, the first three meetings of this committee were conducted illegally in violation of the Municipal Act. I'm not blaming the members of the committee for this, but rather perhaps the chairman, who should have been aware of the fact that public meetings are required under the Municipal Act for this committee. It was not done. So in other words, nobody had a chance to see or hear what was said, and nobody had a chance to react to it. Okay, so that is a problem. Finally, having attended the last three meetings of that committee, it was clear that the agenda and the discussions were generally conducted by Mr. Kumpke as he provided the written information and directed the discussion. A number of issues were not really discussed, as they perhaps should have been, and are not mentioned in the report, one of which is the importance of the fertility of the banks and the damage that could be caused to them by structures. I've also found it quite interesting that one committee member, Dick Archer, raised an important point. He said that if you're building private stairs on public land for a limited use by the landowner, there should be a quid pro quo, that these stairs should be then open to all members of the public and access to them given through the landowner's property. This was not happy, I believe, received by Laura Jones, who did not want anybody walking through her property. Okay? Problem. Finally, there's the fundamental fact that three bylaws have been basically broken by people who have built structures on public land along the lakefront. These three bylaws are quite important. They protect the community. They make sure that no one in this community is privileged, that we are all equal. These bylaws were never discussed at the shoreline advisory committee. Finally, well, not finally, sorry. Jim Mansfield, who presented at the last meeting, has provided a written summary of his sort of presentation to council. I have read it. It is intelligent, it is cogent, it covers many important points. I believe that if the council has to have any credibility on this issue, the points that he raised should be addressed by council, and particularly Mr. Kumpke, in a public forum. Now, this act report itself refers to the word "structures." A structure can be a stair, it can be a 12-by-12 deck, it can also be a boathouse. In other words, somebody can build a boathouse on public land according to this document. So there is an issue here that should be looked at. The issue of liability is not discussed. If a five-year-old claims one of these sets of stairs falls and becomes paraplegic, this is not really discussed, okay? In other words, the cost can be quite high. Finally, the council has previously wasted close to $100,000 on providing protection to shoreline properties through revetments, okay? This document also states that things have to be done. Procedures have to be followed, inspections have to be carried out. This again is going to cost us money. If these structures do not exist, we save money. No problems. Now, as to the previous meeting, there are a number of presenters from the shoreline owners. They claimed in their presentations that the individuals who opposed the destruction of the beaches through the building of revetments and opposed illegal constructions on the shoreline are dividing the community. In reality, it is the lake shore owners, not all of them, of course, who have created this conflict by their unilateral actions. So in other words, no action, no reaction. The division in this community is caused by those who have done the work, those who have created revetments, and those who have broken the bylaws. So that is a problem. Now, one of the presenters, Ms. Pearson, actually said something quite honest in her presentation. She said she did not have a permit for her construction. This construction replaced the previous construction on her public land in front of her property on the shoreline, which was destroyed in the big weather bomb. She tried, previously tried to reconstruct it. This was stopped by a previous council. Therefore, she knew she needed a permit. There was no construction permit given by our sort of vital officer. Therefore, this action was totally done without any kind of permission, and it was done knowingly. So Mr. Hirsch, in his presentation, attacked Stephen Axworthy for not supposedly following procedures. Okay? This is quite interesting. Stephen actually has followed procedures. He actually has stated that those who have built illegal structures should be informed of the fact, and that action should be taken by them or subsequently by council. And actual fact is it's people who built illegal stairs without building permits, who are the ones who are not following procedures. The only way to really address this issue is through a referendum. The reason that this is the case is that three members of this council clearly have conflicts of interest. Two of them are lakefront owners. If this proposal is passed, or stairs or construction is allowed on public land, this allows them to act in this way. In other words, to take advantage of this thing. The other councillor, Penny McMorris, is clearly a friend of Mr. Hirsch. At the end of his presentation, she said, "well done." She didn't say "well done" to any other presenter. Clearly, this is her friend, a person who potentially has violated bylaws and could face consequences for that action. So three councillors are actually in conflict of interest. So a referendum, this allows the community to decide. It was quite interesting that a number of the lake shore presenters do not want a referendum, knowing that they will not get what they want. They want this council to decide because this council so far has been very friendly to lake shore owners. Erwin Kumpke himself, as you've heard, to people who oppose the to lake shore owners. Erwin Kunkka himself, as you've heard, to people opposed the referendum as the unfriendlies. He contacted a proponent of the revetments immediately after the first six people presented to council opposing the revetments. He said, "Oh, the unfriendlies appear before council and in his words, I challenged them." Okay, so in other words, quite clearly, there is a prejudice or, let's say, anyway. Also, a doubt will put that back. Let's, finally, I'll ask Lon a question. Lon, you asked actually two good questions at the meeting, last meeting. You brought up the question of basically decks attached to stairs and also everybody builds a set of stairs. There'll be a lot of stairs on the lake. Okay, this is two really good questions. So I will ask you a hypothetical question. Tomorrow, after this meeting is ended, tomorrow morning, I will go out in front of my property on 8th Avenue. I will build an eight by eight worth deck, six feet high. I will build a set of stairs attached to that deck. What will happen to me? Will I be asked to remove it? And I'll let you at the end of my presentation, okay? So that's a question for you. I think I know the answer. It should be at least the bylaw officer, if the councillor supports our bylaw and building officer and building inspector. If he orders something removed and suddenly you don't back him, there's a problem. And I'd like to know whether that has happened.
Is that your, at the end of your presentation?
Pretty much. In other words, okay, actually, if these structures go forward, we then have two sets of property owners in this municipality, those who are privileged and those who are just the ordinary folk. Okay, that's it.
Okay, I just want to clarify something. When I said "well done" to Mr. Hirsch, he made reference at the beginning of his presentation that he was likely not going to make the 10 minutes.
I'm sorry?
He said he was likely not going to make the 10-minute mark that we give everyone. When he finished, he said, "Look, I made 10 minutes," or something along those lines. My comment was "well done." It was not in regard to his presentation. It was in regard to him needing a 10-minute timeline.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
With respect to your six-foot deck in your front yard, either Curtis or myself would issue an order to remove it if it was without permit. Not with an, got a variance for it. Then you could turn around and just say, "No." Then we'd send you a second letter and then you again would say, "No." And then you would fill out a Schedule C, which would be an appeal when they found the body and anything concerning bylaw is the council, and they would come before council and present. And that's what has happened in the fall, I believe, with a person that had done some building down south of VB and there was no decision made. And then when the SAC was formed, they got referred to there and they wanted to have a more comprehensive review of what we're talking about today, so.
So I can assume then that I would have to remove it?
If council decided to deny your appeal, yeah.
Okay, well, I would assume they would. Okay, they should. I mean, I broke the bylaw. I built on public land without a building permit.
Go ahead, Steve.
Just sort of two things. The first was you mentioned a name, but I didn't catch the person that we should look at. They gave a presentation to the SAC committee?
Oh, I mean, it's Pearson. She was the first, she was the presenter, 411 Sunset.
All right. And I, I mean, this is more just a comment. I, I mean, a lot of us are friends with different people down here, so I don't necessarily see if Penny is friends with one of the presenters, I don't necessarily see that as a conflict of any suspiciousness, conflicts of interest or something very specific and doesn't really fit that definition.
Thank you. Kenner?
You mentioned that you thought I was in a conflict because I was a lakefront property owner. I will remind you that I am not a voting member of SAC. Secondly, you mentioned there were three bylaws which you felt had been violated. What are the numbers so I can do my work?
Well, I've already given them in a previous presentation. I don't have them with me right now. They are listed. Okay, Penny will have the numbers. They're building, you have to have a permit to build anything down here. Secondly, you are not allowed to build on public land. Third, you're not allowed to build on the banks. That summarizes the bylaws.
I, you are allowed, those three bylaws, I can't remember the numbers, Erwin, but I do have them. You are allowed to build with permission. None of them say you cannot build. They say you must have permission.
All right, does, actually, does it say that in the bylaw? No, don't think it does.
Yes.
We'll check that over.
Okay, please do. Okay, and let me, I'm sure you'll let me know if I'm wrong, but.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Stuart, very much. All right, up next is Jamie Horne.
Firstly, I would like to thank, is that on?
I had to have a really close.
Really close, okay, thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank Mayor Morris and council members for the opportunity to publicly share my thoughts on the issue of whether or not to allow private stairs to be built from lakefront properties to the public beaches in the municipality. My name is Jamie Horne and like so many of you in the room, I share a family history of over 100 years of Victoria Beach. As background, I owned the lakefront cottage for 20 years and have spent, but have spent all my summers at my family cottage on 5th and since 1990, my own family place on 7th. As a lakefront owner, I came to appreciate the appeal, the appeal of simply walking out the front of my cottage down the south stairs to enjoy our beaches. As a cottage owner on 7th, I came to strongly believe that the youth, that the use and enjoyment of our beaches is an equally shared right of all cottage owners. I offered the following input on the issue before council, given my personal history and my observations of walking the beaches, especially Canot over a lot of years. Two years ago, this council supported the lakefront, supported the lakefront owners to protect their properties from major bank erosion due to storms on Lakefront. Authorized revetments occurred over a two-year period on a privately funded volunteer model on Canot and King Edward Beaches. As a supporter of these initiatives, I was extremely happy with the visual integrity of the shoreline that was not dramatically altered by the construction and the materials used in the revetments. Perhaps not considered at the time, one consequence of the revetments is that the rocks that formed the bank protection served to extend the base of the bank several meters into the beach. Should the recommendations of the Shoreline Committee be adopted, future stair construction will be anchored well back from the top edge of the bank and will extend over the bank and the revetments to a landing spot on the beach. We have three examples of what those stairs may look like. The municipal stairs at the south end of Canot connected to 4th Avenue, which were a worthy attempt by the municipality to build set stairs that could withstand major storms, but are also an example of the scale required to avoid contact with the bank and extend over the foundation needed to protect it. There are also two sets of privately owned stairs that do not contact the bank and extend over the revetments. I am sure that these three sets of stairs are safe, geotechnically sound and well engineered, but they are also a visible intrusion to the natural shoreline that we all share. I believe the part of the consideration in this decision by council is to recognize that in combining the committee's recommendation with the physical reality of the revetments, it may be choosing a path where any future stairs will be significant structures that compromise visual integrity of the shoreline. A second consideration is that the majority of lakefront owners have invested in revetments and can reasonably believe that they have done their best to protect their property from further erosion from high water storms. Combine this high degree, higher degree of security with the loss over the years of the public pathway that ran in front of their properties, the number of lakefront owners wishing to build stairs may be greater than the historical record would indicate. With respect to existing private stairs as well as the municipal stairs, these structures are inobtrusive and most have long been parked at the beach landscape. My opinion is the council should accept what has been built over the years and leave the responsibility for those structures with the property owners who built them. All this leads me to encourage council to focus on the future with the preservation of the natural beauty of Victoria Beach in mind. The stairs that we have today, with the notable exceptions that I have highlighted, are not what will be built going forward. This is my hope council will restrict and potentially prohibit the construction of any new structures that provide beach access, private beach access. I believe it would be a loss to all cottage, cottage owners to look down the length of any of our beaches and see multiple stairs at a scale that we currently have at the south end of Canot Beach. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to have my voice added to this discussion and appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments, gentlemen? Go ahead, Steve.
I'm just trying to completely understand the two positions that I think of you're taking. The first is one of visual integrity that you're worried about, the aesthetics, if there were more staircases and decks and everything being built on the banks. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that the committee, the committee's recommendation for safe, well-engineered stairs has been required that the stairs be significant. And because of the way the revetments have been placed, the stairs are going to extend at an angle to a landing spot in the beach, which if you look down the beach and 10 people have built those stairs, it will definitely negatively affect the view.
Okay. And then the other one that I just wanted to ask about was, so your position is that there wouldn't be any new development, but then to allow the ones that have been built to remain? I mean, obviously after permitting process and everything else.
This place has a great history and we can't ignore its history. And things have evolved here and you have to acknowledge and live. And, but going forward, you know, it seems to me that responsibility is, you can stop things that look like they're going to change and, and prevent future stairs from, you know, doing, being a nice word for everyone, all the cottage owners.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. All right, up next is, pardon me, Neil Buller, not Tom Buller.
All right, that's my fault.
Go ahead. Can we get out there? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chair and council members, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Neil Buller and my wife and I are property, Victoria Beach property owners on Bayview. I'm speaking to you regarding the Shoreline Committee's recommendations and the opposition expressed throughout the summer at different council meetings. As a shoreline property owner, my family will be directly affected by the council's upcoming decisions. We understand the rationale of the advisory committee and support a fair process of inspection and enforcement of reasonable building standards. Like many lakefront owners, we do have a deck and a set of stairs that provide answers to the water, except there is no beach in front of our property or stretch of shoreline, except in very rare circumstances of very low water levels. I understand that technically these structures are on public land. However, I'd like to offer my understanding of why they exist, why they've been accepted for decades and why removing them now would be both unfair and potentially harmful to the community. Historically, there was actually a public road between the lake and our lakefront properties along Bayview and Thornton. Over decades of lake erosion, something the RM did not stop, wiped away that road. Private property is now within, very close to the, to the water with no access road in between and is threatened by further erosion. Long before any controversy, lakefront owners invested their own money in effort to protect this shoreline along Bayview. In our case, for example, our next-door neighbor's father spent three weeks in the late 60s and the 1970s placing heavy rock reinforcement along three properties, including ours. This helped stop further erosion and preserve the public shoreline that exists today. It has been explained to us anecdotally that at that time, council gave its blessing for the use of the public shoreline in these spots in a recognition of the work and the expense. While that permission may not have been formally recorded, these structures have existed in various form for decades within the knowledge and tacit acceptance of the RM. I have seen in the council archive meetings, I actually spent a few hours there last week, thanks to Lon providing, I could look at these old minutes, that from a time period that referred to considerations of the RM doing shoreline protection, there was actually a stated exclusion of the Bayview shoreline. We and many other property owners have continued to invest thousands of dollars over the years to protect this shoreline from further erosion, benefiting most, both the municipality and ourselves. Lakefront owners have been stewards of this part of Victoria Beach. We have absorbed the costs of shoreline protection, which benefit the RM as a whole. In effect, we have been maintaining and safeguarding an area the municipality hasn't been able or perhaps willing to preserve itself. Bylaws are important, but so is fairness. For decades, these structures have been allowed to remain. Residents have relied on that precedent when repairing, maintaining and using them. To reverse course now without acknowledging that longstanding history would unfairly punish those who have cared for and invested in this shoreline for the benefit of everyone, not to mention adversely impacting the value of these properties. An additional practical reality relates to safety. Without these structures, people, especially children visiting these properties, will attempt to reach the water directly, scrambling over uneven and often slippery rocks, which while clearly necessary to protect against erosion, could be a safety hazard. By providing a safe route over the rocks, property owners help to avoid inevitable injuries on public land. We're not asking the RM to ignore its bylaws. We're asking that you recognize the unique history of this shoreline on Bayview, the contributions the lakefronters, lakefront owners have made and the role these structures play in both safety and shoreline stewardship. With the committee, committee's, committee's recommendation, we can work together through a fair, practical solution that respects the public interest while also honoring the history and contributions of property owners who protected this shore for decades. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments, Tom? Steve, go ahead.
So, your position is very similar to the last presenter. However, I suppose the question that I would really ask is, what should we do about the one, about the staircases that not only continue to be built? And then again, we're not just talking about staircases. I want to be very clear about that. I think to a lot of people, especially in the restricted area, that's what it seems like, but there are other structures around the municipality. But what do we do about the property owners who continue to build these despite the fact that earlier this year, we said absolutely not and we will start to enforce our bylaws? Then we did nothing and they continue to remain. So how do we go about that?
It may remain or be newly constructed.
Newly constructed. They've been freshly installed.
I'm not aware of that.
There were several that were erected after we said that we would start to enforce our bylaws and they're there. So that's, the problem is we're not enforcing our bylaws. So I can at least get on to it and.
I can't see what that's my, my question to answer. That's your question.
Thank you.
It wasn't made in humor.
Thank you.
So. So, here's the issue. If we start to retroactively approve these structures, which were illegally erected, without any sort of permits, without any sort of approvals, and they're continuing to be built and we continue to ignore our own bylaws, then we create a two-tier municipality. Because just as Mr. Juza pointed out, he has a lot of public land in front of his land. I'm sure that he would take the position that he's, you know, adding quite a bit to this municipality, whether or not he'd agree to that or not. I'm a councillor, I have quite a bit of public property in front of my property because I'm over on Fifth on the west side. Are either one of us allowed to now build in front of our property because we've contributed to the community? This is the problem, right? Because we're not enforcing our bylaws, we're continuing to not enforce them now. And that's the problem. So we can talk about maybe looking at the ones that have been there for the last hundred years, but I'm asking you as to what your position is on the newly instructed ones that just came up? Because you're saying that we should grandfather these in what we don't need to.
Steve, he's already explained that he wasn't aware of those three, so I don't think it's really his question to answer.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments, gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you again.
Sorry, no, you can't speak, Roger. No, sorry, you can't speak, Roger. Thank you. No, no, Roger, no. Thank you. Thank you. I know that's hard, but thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Buller. Up next is Bob Lawler, please.
Thank you, councillor, for allowing me to speak for a change. You're not a joke. As council members, you are responsible for making important and difficult decisions. That's probably why we have trouble getting people to volunteer for twenty. About what is best for the community as a whole, remember that word, as a whole, and it's public beaches. I would like to address the current decision, private stairs on public beaches. Now, council has often reminded us when discussing day visitors that our beaches are public beaches. And we, as cottage owners, do not own these public beaches. Okay? So we have to keep that in mind. Public beaches we're talking about. To my friends along the shoreline, I hope you can listen and think about my presentation and try and understand my point of view. If not, I hope you can remain friends and agree to disagree. I have divided my presentation into three parts. One, why might people want to build private stairs? And this will all be in the VRA. I do not know enough about the stairs outside of that area. Number two, comments on the August 19th council meeting. And finally, part three, a question for the councils. Well, let's get started. Why build private stairs? Well, first reason I come across is the need to access the beach. This seems obvious and reasonable until you realize that there are nine sets of public stairs between the front house and the car house. And one beach has four sets alone. So it's not hard to come to the conclusion that there is at least one set of public stairs within a five-minute walk for any shoreline owner. Five minutes seems like very easy and reasonable access to me. So I don't know about the need for public access to the beach for our landowners. Reason number two for building private stairs. The stairs can be built without destabilizing the banks. Is that a fact or is that a myth? Obviously, we need expert opinions. Last council meeting, right? Blake Taylor listed six statements based on his conversation with geotechnical engineer Steve Topping and the technical information that Mr. Topping offered during the August 6 SAC meeting. These statements include how fragile some of the Victoria Beach banks are and also the increased potential for erosion when structures are added to the banks. Blake also listed three expert sources that he had resourced, agreed that, and all these resources agreed that structures on the banks decrease the bank's stability. And finally, if you want to go back and research the $600,000 merit report, and that's, that also warned about destructive effects on these banks at Victoria Beach. So that's the second one. If you want to believe that, fact or fiction, why don't you check the facts, check with the experts? Third reason for building these private stairs might be that they offer convenience. It certainly seems like a great idea to just be able to walk out your front door, walk across your yard, and walk down the steps and you're on the beach. It's certainly convenient. However, is it worth risking the stability of the banks, losing part of your property, and as well as ruining the natural look of the beach? All that you are risking instead of a five-minute walk to the nearest set of stairs? To me, that is hard to understand. But as beachfront owners, you can still set up chairs under your yard, enjoy a morning cup of coffee, or better still, a glass of wine while watching the sunset. All of these things, these two things you can enjoy without having private stairs. Now, there was a fourth one that I entitled entitlement, but I decided not to speak about that because if you build stairs because you think you're entitled, then I know you're not going to listen to me. Okay, so that's my first part about why I might want to build stairs. Part two of my presentation refers to comments that were made at the August 19th council meeting. First comment, the president of the Victoria Beach Cottage Owners Association gave an excellent and comprehensive presentation about the private stair issue, after which I was shocked and angered by the way she was unfairly treated by certain members of the council. That's as far as I'll go on that. Second comment from that meeting, one of the speakers made reference to how things were 100 years ago. Well, this is not 100 years ago. We have no road or school on Bayview, no public pathway along the banks of Patricia, Alexandra, King Edward, and Canot. Why is that? It's all because of erosion. We can't stop erosion. A natural thing. We can't stop the rain, we can't stop the waves, whatever. Okay? But there is no reason to help erosion along by putting structures along the banks. How about instead, we look for ways to slow it down? Okay, my third comment, one of the speakers mentioned this phrase, defying logic. And I got to thinking, how about paying thousands of dollars to protect the banks with piles of rocks, then spending even more money to build structures that will then destabilize these same banks? I think that's defying logic. Okay, coming finally to the third part of my delegation. It involves a question to you guys up front here. During the winters of 2023 and 2024, council gave approval for locks to be placed along Alexandra, King Edward, and Canot beaches. The reason for the approval was the banks needed to be protected so that shoreline owners would not lose property. And then, was it enough of those meetings? And I know that's pretty well what you said. Okay, here's my question. How can council reconcile this with now allowing unnecessary private stairs that will lead to destabilizing these same banks? Okay? So, maybe Council Chesney, you can start us off. Why would you allow them to put locks down to protect their property? Now we're thinking of letting them put structures on the bank to destabilize.
Sorry, who are you asking questions to now?
I'm asking to... Ben, sorry.
Ben, okay, you said Chesney, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Council, go ahead.
That, of course, depends entirely on the substrate, what's the face of the bank? What is the structure and what is the design of the steps? You've adopted the assumption that steps over the bank or down the bank automatically create erosion of the bank. That, regrettably, is still subject to debate. I think the key is proper engineering and proper permit and inspection.
Thank you.
Again, to clarify what our geotechnical engineer, who was a member of SAC, confirmed to me, properly engineered stairs that take into account the structure and the geotechnical analysis do not cause erosion. Steve Topping's comment was, there are sometimes problems at the very edge of the stairs on the beach. We have that in writing from him, period.
I found nothing to add other than what these gentlemen have said. Thanks. Okay, Steve?
I think my position on this is pretty clear.
Okay, finally, Council Chesney.
Sorry, you're gonna have to repeat the question.
Okay, I want to know, you gave permission to have the rocks put down over the last two winters, the reason being that you had to protect the banks so that the owners, the shoreline owners, would not lose their property. Now, we're talking about allowing them to put up structures that will destabilize these same banks that we put the rocks up for.
Right. I think Irwin has answered that question.
Okay, so Irwin, okay, so what you're saying is that what Steve Topping said to you, and then he, that Blake Taylor kind of contradict each other, and then all these studies that, and the $600,000 that we spent, that tell us one thing, you can, you're saying it's something different.
Again, to be clear, I don't think what Blake heard from Steve Topping is what I have in writing really contradictory another. I, you know, the main thrust of SAC was to do two things. Figure out a way to deal with safety with respect to the stairs as been emphasized earlier, and to make sure that the structure is not impacting in a negative way on the bank, period. Properly engineered stairs that take into account the geotechnical structure below the stairs will not cause erosion. There's lots of stairs out there that don't meet those standards and there's no doubt that yes, they can cause erosion. We're not in conflict...
Okay, I would, again, I would...
We're trying to go forward in a positive way and the SAC report also deals with derelict and unsafe stairs. And those will be dealt with if the SAC report is adopted.
Okay, but I mean, most of us are here to wonder, what we really wanted to know from the SAC committee is, are all these stairs, if they've been built without a permit, are they not to be taken down or are they allowed to stay?
SAC did not deal with the politics of the permit. SAC came to the table with some ideas on how to go forward and clearly there needs to be any new structure, a proper permitting process. On the existing structures, SAC was concerned that the owners should be required to provide some degree of confirmation that the structures are safe and that they're built in a way that will not destabilize the banks. And if they aren't, then those have to be remedied.
Okay, so, again, Blake Taylor had several studies that showed that they do, you can't build stairs without some kind of impact. I would like you for next meeting to bring me and show me some study somewhere that says that if you build them correctly, they would be okay. Would that fair enough?
Sure, I have the email from Steve Topping.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to finish up just with a quote here, and this is something from the Manitoba Municipal Act. Okay, it states in that act that a council is required to make decisions that are in the best interest of the municipality as a whole. Okay, so hopefully that you will follow that. What is, what's in the interest of the municipality as a whole? Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve. Do you have a question?
Just to clarify one thing of what you're asking of council, it was that Irwin's, what he put forward was a really properly engineered staircase from apparently what Mr. Topping is saying that it won't cause erosion. It was just more to tag on to that, that none of these structures have had engineers' reports attached to the buildings. They have not been submitted. They have not gone through any of the permitting process. They have not submitted any structural drawings at all. So it is exceptionally difficult for me to accept that any of these would be properly engineered to not cause any damage to the bank.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Up next, Elizabeth Murray.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to appear and speak about shoreline structures. I am a retired lawyer and my husband and I are lake shore property owners with a shoreline structure on Canot Beach. I'm here to clarify some of the misstatements that many of those who are opposed to shoreline structures have made, both here and in the community generally. I would also like to emphasize the main points council should keep in mind when considering these issues. The opponents of shoreline structures such as stairs and platforms are advocating for the removal of all existing structures and a blanket prohibition against future structures, at least on some of the beaches in the VRA. They have also singled out three sets of stairs on Canot Beach. Those structures have been described as illegal by Ms. Sarchak, Mr. Juza, and others, as well as by councillor Axworthy at four separate council meetings and in other communication. Mr. Juza has also posted photographs of those structures on Facebook. Those individuals have personalized their fight. Their language is intentionally provocative and purposely designed to inflame the residents of Victoria Beach. This approach is detrimental to our community and potentially harmful for the property owners they are targeting, of which I am one. Before I proceed any further, I want to emphasize that a determination of the legal status of the stairs on Canot Beach will not be made in this forum. Should it become necessary, that determination will be made in a court of law at a future date. However, until someone with the proper authority has determined that these structures contravene a particular law, they are categorically not illegal. To say they are is both false and misleading. When individuals who are opposed to lake shore structures call those structures illegal, they are simply stating their opinion. And just because they repeatedly voice their opinion publicly, it doesn't mean it's true. So what do those opponents state as justification for their position? Well, first they say that the Canot stairs are in breach of a bylaw and they have referred to a few different bylaws over the past months. But none of those bylaws specifically deal with stairs and platforms on the shoreline, nor do they provide a formal process by which permits for those structures might nor do they provide a formal process by which permits for those structures may be approved. These facts were explicitly recognized by this council in the preamble to its moratorium resolution of December 17th, 2024, a resolution that was passed unanimously. Shoreline property owners have accessed the beaches in the VRA from their properties in a variety of ways, including stairs, for decades and some for over a hundred years. As a result of that longstanding use, we say, access to the beach by lake shore property owners has become a legally enforceable right recognized by established principles in our common law. Such access have never been illegal, it certainly is not illegal now. The second reason the opponents are suggesting the stairs on Canot Beach are illegal is because they are in breach of an alleged moratorium that council passed by Resolution 2024 slash 213 on December 17th, 2024. With the greatest respect to council, it is my position that the moratorium resolution has no binding legal effect. A simple resolution of council cannot supersede the existing rights of shoreline property owners, nor can it change development rights in the municipality. As a result, any stairs or other shoreline structures that may have been constructed after the moratorium resolution was passed, including those on Canot Beach, cannot and should not be described as illegal. Counselor Axworthy and others have expressly stated or implied that the owners of the structures on Canot Beach deliberately flooded council's authority by acting in contravention of the moratorium. Counselor Axworthy has also implied that we have denied ownership of the structures when we have been asked. Neither of those things are true. For the record, neither a representative of council, nor an employee of the RMVB, nor anyone else has ever asked me or my husband if we are the owners of the stairs directly in front of our property. Had we been asked, we would certainly have acknowledged that we are. The same is true of the owners of the other stairs on Canot Beach that Counselor Axworthy and others have specifically told. Moreover, the resolution that created the moratorium is not only in the body of the minutes of the December 17th, 2024 council meeting. The only way we would have known about the moratorium is if we had read those minutes or viewed the videotape of the council meeting, which we did not. Neither my husband nor I, nor the other owners of the structures on Canot Beach, were aware of the moratorium until after Counselor Axworthy referred to it at the July 8th council meeting. None of us acted in flagrant disregard of the moratorium or of council's authority. I would suggest that Counselor Axworthy and other opponents of shoreline structures have weaponized the moratorium to spread dissension and wreak havoc in our community. But while they have used the moratorium to target specific structures on Canot Beach, their real interest is not in those particular structures. They simply do not want shoreline property owners to be able to access the beach directly in front of their homes by private stairs or other structures. As Ms. Sarchak said, not now, not ever. It doesn't matter if those property owners have had structures for decades. It doesn't matter if a geotechnical engineer says the structures are not harming the bank. It doesn't matter if the structures are safe. They just don't want them, period. However, while I believe that everything I've said this evening needed to be said, it's really all beside the point. On July 8th of this year, council unanimously passed zoning bylaw 1651. Less than 25 property owners in the municipality objected to the bylaw, which is why it was able to pass in its current form. Bylaw 1651 specifically contemplates the structure of stairs and platforms on the publicly, on the public land that separates privately owned lake shore property from the lake and beaches. That is the most important thing for council and our community to remember. The question of if those structures are or can be allowed is no longer relevant. Council cannot now prohibit those structures when the bylaw specifically contemplates them. In light of bylaw 1651, the only thing left for council to decide is the process by which approval for both existing and future structures may be given. The Shoreline Advisory Committee's report was intended to help council with that decision. I suggest that the recommendations in the SAC report and how they can be used or modified should be the subject of council's focus going forward. The last point I want to make is in response to the suggestion that allowing the construction of stairs and other shoreline structures will somehow change the essence of our community. As I have stressed today, and as others, I just have, um, a short while to go, and as others have said in previous presentations, shoreline structures in various forms have existed in this community for many decades. No one is attempting to introduce a new element into the landscape of the beaches in the VRA. Zoning bylaw 1651 simply codifies what is already a longstanding and legal reality, and the processes that council will develop to operationalize the bylaw will provide a mechanism to ensure that all of the shoreline structures are safe and constructed in a manner that does not harm our banks. I want to thank council for your efforts and urge you to move forward on this issue in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thanks. Comments? Steve?
So, just to clarify, uh, you do have staircases on, uh, in front of your property on the bank?
I do, I think I've made that very clear.
Okay, and are they on your property or are they on public property?
They are partly on our property and partly on the public property, just as is contemplated in bylaw 1651.
Okay, um, and I'm assuming that you received, uh, that you submitted for and received full approvals from, uh, from our building inspector?
Mr. Axworthy, you know that we did not do that, and you know that you approved a bylaw, uh, uh, resolution that specifically said that there wasn't a formal permitting process in place for shoreline structures.
There is, because you need to have a variance to build.
I'm not gonna debate the issue with you, Counselor Axworthy, I've stated my position. I think it's clear from the resolution that was unanimously passed by council in December of 2024.
Okay, um, I'm curious, and I'm only responding to what Mr. Hirsch had said to me last time, which is, um, are you a municipal lawyer? Because he told me to mind my lane.
I am not a municipal lawyer, nor am I, um, reporting to give you a formal legal opinion tonight.
Okay, can I?
I'm not gonna tell you my background.
Okay, I understand. Can I tell you what our municipal lawyer, who is in his lane, said to us when we requested comment on this, please?
I don't think this is, is the, uh, place for you to tell me that or to tell us that. That's something that council can deal with the, uh,
You had asked.
... at a different time.
You had brought up the legalities of this, so this would be in keeping of your delegation.
I'm, I'm not going to debate the issue with you.
Okay, again, it's in keeping of your delegation and what you had said to me just a few minutes ago. So our municipal lawyer said to us that the RMVB can enforce structures on public property, this is in keeping with both the previous law bylaws, as well as the current bylaws. The RMVB can enforce structures on public property at any time. There is no grandfathering and no timelines. The RMVB enforcement bylaw is sufficient. So that's, that's our municipal lawyer in his lane, in his area of expertise. I would also like to point out that you asked about who can enforce this. It's our building inspector who has specifically said to us that these structures are illegal. That's the reason why this actually came up originally in our first term. And in our first term, you asked as to whether or not we had asked anybody, we actually had. We sent out, uh, letters to every single last property owner along the shoreline.
Counselor Axworthy, do you have a question for me?
I'm responding to what you had said that I was saying and misrepresenting the actual, what, my, my intention of what I said.
I'm, I'm certainly, uh, prepared to ask, uh, answer a question if you have one for me, if it's something that's appropriate for me to answer, but I'm not going to debate, uh, enter into a debate like you are, uh, engaging in right now.
So it was just a response. Um, so then, are you aware that the bylaws had already required you to submit permits for approvals? And that they had to be permitted by our building inspector, and that the moratorium was completely unnecessary because the moratorium are the bylaws?
Again, Counselor Axworthy, I was quoting directly from the moratorium that specifically stated that there weren't any bylaws, nor was there a formal process in place which governed shoreline structures. And there's no point in you and I entering into a debate right now about it. I'm not prepared to do that.
Okay, um, all I'm gonna do, and I'm gonna end on this, is that I was quoting from our municipal, uh, our municipal lawyer, our building inspector, as well as the enforcement of our bylaws and general regulation as municipal governments have to enforce.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Liz. Uh, up next, Andrew Stellman, please.
Here we go. Thank you for letting me speak today. I wanna begin by saying thank you to SAC for their efforts. But unfortunately, one critical point is glaringly absent, undermining everything. The lack of any shoreline clarifications. By default, insinuating that all shorelines in the RM are the same, because they're not. We are now hearing from the usual shoreline owners. There are already 180 structures along the shoreline. Why should Clubhouse, Arthur, Patricia, Alexander, King Edward, or Canot be subject to different rules? Well, if you live, if you choose to live on a property along the six sandy beaches that I just named, you are subject to different rules. If you are blessed to be in front of the best beaches in the VRA, you should be protective stewards of them, not self-serving abusers. The best beaches, unlike...
Just kind of worded, I, I apologize, but that terminology is a little bit offside, I'm sorry.
How so, which?
The abusers.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll, I'll retract that one. The best beaches, unlike the other vast areas in the RM, far less public, where most of these 180 structures reside, including Bayview, Pelican Point, Victoria Boulevard, where these structures are not interfering with the public in any provocative way, not posing any great public danger, nor are they altering the enjoyment of a communal beach experience. They don't directly affect the community at large, and that is why there is no pushback on them. Unlike the strong pushback in our six public beaches, appropriate pushback. It's a shame that certain shoreline owners continue to taint the reputation of the many other shoreline owners who they don't represent, year after year, asking, even demanding more public land for private pleasure. Never forget, there are lots of owners on the shoreline of these six beaches who want nothing to do with stairs or decks on a cliff, who, as our REE claim at the last meeting, prefer not to get involved and not to speak out. And let's not sugarcoat it, stairs of convenience and decks of pleasure, nothing more. Nothing in any way protective or advantageous to the longevity of the shoreline. And now we're hearing the hail Mary argument that they need stairs in case of a fire. But if the public stairs are good enough for the rest of us, they're good enough for them too. In fact, their proximity to them gives them an advantage over the rest of us. Furthermore, I have spent most of my life witnessing certain shoreline owners safely climb up and down the banks, arms full of food, drink, beach items, and other jumbled pleasures. So it's impossible to swallow the argument, in any emergency, they will get up and down the banks just fine without massive eyesore stairs and decks. So yes, there is still work to be done as to what rightfully can be built and where on the shoreline. They talk, the pencils are still out, and the pens of permanency are still put away. Some say, public hearings are in order, and with the process so far, increasing calls for a referendum. Food for thought, I say. And I wanna switch gears and talk to the supposed community divisiveness that our REE, our REE needed to make a point of in her opening remarks last council meeting, and interestingly, each shoreline owner needed to as well. So I thought I too would tackle the subject. And by tackling it, pointing out the blatant gaslighting going on by a few select shoreline owners and select council members. Now, gaslighting is defined as a form of psychological manipulation and where a person or group causes someone to question their own sanity, their memories, or their perception of reality. And the definition of a gaslighter? Gaslighters always blame you for your reaction to their behavior, never acknowledging the disrespect that triggered it, never wanting to discuss their actions, only your reactions to it. Gaslighting, my friends, is a live and well-known behavior. It's a small and select group of shoreline owners and council who want us to ignore what they have done or want to do, and rather, they wanna focus how their response from the community makes them feel sad and unwanted and hurt. Oh, that's wrong. All the while conveniently omitting that people who oppose some of their wants are labeled as the troublemakers, or certain families are labeled the crazies. Heck, even one member of council, and as far as to call the opposing council and shoreline owners the unfriendlies. I won't even mention the appalling new nickname some shoreline owners have given Nancy, the president of the BBCOA. Remember how horrible certain shoreline residents treated our past mayor, Brian Hobson? Many of us have not forgotten. Could you imagine if that behavior was going on today to their rhythm choice? Let's never forget, had five families not illegally dumped rocks on Arthur Beach 15 years ago, without authorization, without permits, and without community consultation, under the cloak of darkness no less, 500 people would have not had to rapidly rally in rages at a church in Liddeday in the needed days following. Ground zero from when the division in this community started. And here we are, once again, 15 years later, a community still being forced to fight back as a few select shoreline owners return to this trough, demanding more public land for their conveniences and pleasures, particularly since the bias of this council, evidence to its inaction, to stop anything breaking the bylaw, has become completely predictable. A bias so blatant that one counselor, Steve Axworthy, is piled on at every turn by his fellow counselors for standing up, seemingly punished for his audacity in having an opinion instead of being a rubber stand boy. And I will take this moment to say, thank you, Steve. You are seen, you are heard, and you are appreciated. And let's not forget the recent unwarranted display at last council meeting where the REE's personal bias was stated very clearly when she attacked the president of the BBCOA's legitimacy for speaking. To wrap up this presentation, I have two messages. First, to the select few shoreline owners. If you really want harmony, stop demanding public land for your conveniences. Don't build structures without permits, without proper authorizations, or without proper geotechnical approval, or pretend you don't know who built what was in front of you. Play other rules like everyone else. And please, stop with the failed threats of court action that we all know paralyzes someone on this council. As Miranda Pleasant put it, change behavior is the only real apology and the only way to go forward. Otherwise, it's all just manipulation. And finally, to this council. it's all just manipulation." And finally, to this council. Democracies don't work if we don't demand the best from those who are supposed to lead. If we let elected leaders be bullies and just get away with whatever they want, just look to the south of us, without consequences or electoral pushback, we're doomed. If we just lay down, democracies, they become pointless. So stand up, some of us, we will continue to do. If this council truly wants the vision to stop, then start treating everyone the same, enforcing bylaws in the unbiased fiduciary way you were elected to. And please, stop the gaslighting. The real threat, the real risk in this community is not massive, so let's stop trying to sell it as much, if between a small, select shoreline group and everyone else. And enough bending to the threats of litigation that those in the same breath will tell us all they want is loving kumbaya. I know, as you put it, Nancy, some of my words, I'm wrapping up. We're sharp today, and I know this council has done a lot of good on so many issues, and you are appreciated. But when it comes to the shoreline, it's the one file entrusted to you that has resulted in very extremely disappointing results again and again. You have one year left in your terms. Please, stop forgetting. Stop forgetting, we are only borrowing these beaches from our children, borrowing them, bending to the entitlement fused whims of a few for the here and now. It just needs to stop, and it needs to stop here, today, once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? No, thank you, Andrew. Up next is Mike Mason, please. Oh, there you are.
Do you want to hear slides up right away, or do you want to wait for them?
Um, no, right away, why not? I think I'll start by mentioning, the last time I presented to council, I was after Andrew Stellman. That was two years ago. He's always a tough act to follow. So I'll give it my best shot tonight. Thank you to the mayor and council for the opportunity to speak, Steve. I will email my presentation to council. My name is Mike Mason, and I am a property owner in the VRA. Please note that my comments tonight are specifically referencing the public beaches of the VRA, including Kanot, King Edward, Alexandra, Patricia, Arthur, and Clubhouse Beach. I strongly feel that determination for other shoreline areas in the RMVB, such as Bayview, Pelican Point, Wannasing, should all be determined by residents of those respective areas, working with council and the shoreline advisory committee. A defined feature of beaches of the VRA is the principle of equal access. Our shoreline belongs to the entire community and should not give the impression of private ownership. Unfortunately, some individuals, both recently and in the past, have disregarded this principle by erecting private structures without municipal approval. Such actions undermine fairness and do create frustration for the community. My position is clear and unwavering. We must preserve our beaches and our banks. They are at risk of irrevocable damage by further development. Because of this, I do fully support the position of BBCOA on this matter that they clearly outlined in recent emails and their delegation two weeks ago. The sandbanks of the VRA are at high risk of erosion and many are unstable. Technical experts believe the banks are unstable, as referenced many times in the Baird Report. One passage in the report reads, "The south end of Kanot is not stable." Another passage in reference to the banks of King Edward reads, "Existing conditions are near failure." These risks have led council to permit shoreline property owners to build revetments on King Edward, Alexandra, and Kanot South, to protect the banks and the properties behind the banks from erosion and property loss. Now, shoreline property owners, many of whom asked for the toll protection, are now asking council to permit private stairs and decks to be built on our public beaches. An area described by experts is unstable and near failure. At this point, there is an unexplained inconsistency between allowing the placement of massive revetments on one hand to protect against further shoreline erosion, and on the other hand, allowing the building of shoreline structures like decks and stairs, which, a credible, scientifically-based report tells us, will only worsen and accelerate shoreline erosion. This is unnecessary. Public access stairs have been provided by the RM for decades. By utilizing the existing public stairs, we minimize the impact to these eroding banks by limiting development on the banks. This protects private property. If you wouldn't mind, would you go to the next slide?
Sure.
Please note that the slides are not to alarm anyone, but simply to give pause and to give consideration to the future of our shoreline if we do not proceed cautiously, with care, and diligence.
I was going to say more, stairs that are built without permits.
Yeah, that's right.
Sorry, Mike.
No, it's okay. Stairs built on sandbanks will further contribute to erosion by concentrating and channeling rainwater and surface runoff, creating paths of least resistance that wash away sand and further destabilizing the sandbanks. A prime example of this would be the stairs at the top of Patricia Beach. With the recent rainfall, you can see the channel, you can see the gully, and you can see how it erodes sand onto the top of the stairs. The weight of stairs, decks, and foot traffic compact the sand, making the sand less permeable and more prone to surface runoff and erosion. The construction process itself often requires reshaping of the bank, removal of vegetation, and a further destabilizing of an already unstable sandbank. For example of this, walk along King Edward and Alexandra, the banks are extremely steep, with some sections overhanging. They are unsafe, unstable, and an attempt to build on these banks would be an unacceptable ecological impact to an already stressed environment. Simply stairs accelerate erosion and will only hasten the risk of loss of land, including private shoreline property. High-water years are coming, not a matter of if, but when. We've all seen the high-water years, we've all been here for those years. Storm damage on many occasions have torn out municipal stairs and chunks of the bank attached to the stairs. It would make no sense to increase the number of stairs on our VRA banks, as it would only increase the risk to the banks for no public purpose. We've already utilized a significant percentage of public land for the revetments to protect private property. More public land would be needed for private stairs. These large structures would only serve to encourage exclusivity for a select few, further reduce recreational space on our beaches, and serve no purpose whatsoever to the vast majority of ratepayers. Is there a reason that shoreline property owners need stairs? I've listened to all the previous delegations, and so far, in my opinion, have not heard a compelling reason, a compelling reason such as protection. One delegation said, and I quote, "Shoreline access for late-front property owners is a longstanding legal right." So if I heard this correctly, if you own shoreline property, you have the legal right to develop the adjacent public land. Frankly, if this assertion were true, I believe council would have legally permitted stairs years ago, and we would not be having these discussions today. I've also heard, and I quote, "There's now in the RM widespread public use of, private use of public land in various ways, such as pathways, gardens, parking spaces, and other structures." Does this mean that we want to open the floodgates to any private structure that anyone wants on public land? Clearly, this is an absurd notion. So is the notion that if you have shoreline property, you also have the legal right to develop the land adjacent to you. In reference to the, I have private gardens on public property, we've all seen them on some of the street corners. They beautify the area. None of these gardens have signs that say, "Private garden, please do not enjoy." Should council permit private stairs on our public beaches, the stairs will all have signs that say, "Private stairs, do not use." These signs will be up and down our beaches, clearly indicating they are only for a select few. These signs and the stairs would litter the beach and detract from the natural beauty of our beaches. Private stairs will not serve any function for the larger community. There is no egalitarian purpose to the private stairs. There's no protective purpose. They are for convenience only. If I control you long to go, the next question. I didn't develop these, by the way. They were sent by a friend for consideration, so I've chosen to show them tonight. Where do we draw the line, folks? Would council permit private stairs to be built by the property directly south of the King Edward stairs? That property is 25 steps from the municipal stairs. This is non-narrative assertion. That property owner has already presented to council in support of private stairs and decks. Along the beach of King Edward, no shoreline property owner currently has to walk more than five cottages to the north or south to access municipal stairs. This is a two-minute walk I did the other day. So again, right from the middle of that reach, in either direction, you can access RMVB stairs in two minutes. A few comments about the shoreline advisory committee. Please note that I appreciate the work that the committee has put in and the challenges of the task that they faced. I do feel that the shoreline advisory committee process did have some deficiencies. The most notable was lack of public engagement. Initially, they held closed meetings with which the general public could not attend. Then, when meetings were open to the public, you could attend, but you couldn't ask questions or engage in any discussion. Additionally, there was no call for public input. There appeared to be little to no correspondence received by the committee from cottagers who did send correspondence. My correspondence regarding private stairs was not received by committee members that I've spoken to. Public engagement did not appear to be an aspect of the shoreline advisory committee process. But please note that previous iterations of this committee actively sought out public input. In 2012, the shoreline advisory committee chaired by Norman Branson, which many of you are familiar with, they listened to an exhaustive list of delegations to inform their decision-making process, and they included the public as stakeholders. Norman Branson wrote Tom Farrell in June 21 of 2012 with the comment, with the committee's final 33-page report. In his cover letter, he wrote, "The committee is particularly grateful to the community at large who provided, through attendance and their presentations, delegations at public meetings, written submissions, emails, survey responses, and personal contact, the essential ingredient without which we could not have proceeded." Again, only after fully engaging the public did they write the report. Our current shoreline advisory committee did not engage in anything close to this level of public engagement. I recommend that the shoreline advisory committee schedule public presentations in open houses next July, when the committee is, when the community is fully populated and engaged. There's, I'm basically done, so one second. There's no rush or current need for council to vote or vote on or permit any private stairs in case. I stand in full support of the recent BBCOA submission and its recommendations. It is clear, clearly, and compellingly written, and their submission clearly falls into their mission statement. Thank you for your time, and please give their submission and my comments their full consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, counsel? Thank you. Up next is Jennifer Enbret. Jennifer, you're still with us virtually, I hope.
If you activate your camera, Jennifer, you'll come on.
There you go.
Hello.
Go ahead, please.
Everyone can hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about the structures, for the most part, on the publicly used sand beaches, which are mostly on the north side. There was a reason why the Baird Report lists all these areas separately, as they are all quite different. So I'm speaking only of the north beaches that are also known as erosional beaches, and I'll email my comments later. I'm a citizen of the Manitoba Métis Federation. I'm very active with the Métis Federation with many environmental initiatives, including to protect shorelines on the traditional territory of the Métis, including the Lake Winnipeg watershed. I'm also often in communication with the Lake Winnipeg Indigenous Collective, with plans to be part of their gathering soon. I have an environment club at my school for 10 years. I'm a member of UNESCO, Learning for a Sustainable Future, and Educators for Climate Action, among others. I have also been on all three shoreline committees, which other committee members and council members cannot necessarily say. There's been council members that have been involved the whole time, but not necessarily on the committee. I am no longer on the current committee, in case not all are aware, as I chose not to continue after the one-year time period stated in the terms of reference. All of this is to say that my reasons for giving back to the lands on which I reside and feel a connection are because of truly caring for the land in general, not just at VB, and in being relationship with it as kin, as many of my ancestors have done since time immemorial. And not just the hundred or so years that settlers have been on the land, and honestly, all lands that I live on and visit with everything that I do with the environment. So my purpose is environmental. I have always tried to connect to those who can share the science, as an overwhelming majority of stakeholders at the Victoria Beach shared is the way forward in the document, what we heard from 2011, 2012. That was the time when the entire community was invited to participate in discussions about the shoreline. This current committee has been asked if Sunday, September 7, would work as an open house to hear from the community, and I hope that that's still happening, but the community hasn't had this date shared with them yet, to my knowledge, and at this point, five days isn't a lot of notice for that open house. Perhaps 20 to 30 delegations have had a chance to speak thus far on this. In 2011, we had hundreds of presentations, letters, and surveys to read through, and that was how our reports were created, with the consensus of the voices of the community. This time, I have had a few people ask me if I've had a chance to read their letters that were written to the shoreline advisory committee. I did not receive those letters that they spoke of, and I didn't know that they wrote a letter until they told me. At one of the SAC summer meetings, the members of the public who came to the meeting were not allowed to talk during the meeting, and they were told if they wanted to communicate with the committee that they should write to the chair, but I believe I've only seen one of those letters, to my knowledge. For the past 15 years, people have been speaking of protecting properties, and others have spoken of protecting the rare ecosystem of the beaches. I like to do both, if possible. The current committee, our shoreline committee, has its terms of reference to follow applicable laws and rights, such as laws and rights, beach preservation, shoreline erosion, and property protection, environmental impact, aesthetics, and affordability and feasibility. And I took those terms seriously, as I did in all of the times I was on the committee. We are supposed to be considering preservation, erosion, and environmental impact, which are terms given to us as members of the committee from this council. We were further asked to consider documents such as the Baird Report and the documents created by former shoreline committees that I was on. Currently, we've been told that none of the structures that were made have a permit. I have heard a builder say that if they had been asked to be, by a property owner, to build a private structure on public property, they would have refused if there wasn't a permit. Somehow, almost 200 structures have been built with no permits, from what we were told at these meetings. Protecting the beaches, I'm not sure this applies in the situation of these structures, however, it completely does apply for the next items in the terms of reference: shoreline erosion, property protection, environmental impact. The proposed stairs do not protect people's properties or the banks. We have been told by the RM for decades to stay off the banks as it causes erosion. Putting structures every 50 to 100 feet would certainly aggravate that erosion and stability. Because the VB community has stated that in the past they wanted neutral, science-based information, let me share some. The north-facing beaches, King Edward, Alexandra, Kanot, and South, are all flagged in a document by Baird Coastal Engineering called the Detailed Design Report. I don't need to show it to you, but this is it. I'm holding it. From 2014, I shared this at the meeting on July 6 and July 20, but it didn't get added to the SAC report, even though I feel it is very important. So I just feel it's good for everyone to hear this information that didn't have that chance. It says that Kanot South is not stable. It says that Alexandra conditions are near failure, and that they're only marginally stable for King Edward. However, that was 11 years ago, and at this point, so the conditions would be worsened. It is considering, it is concerning that this was not added to these documents, because you, the RM council, are being asked to consider these structures, so it would be more helpful if you had all that information. At one of the public meetings, the geotechnical engineer, Steve Topping, spoke of how structures could not only cause erosion, but also be a problem for stability. I don't think that that's in the documents either. Perhaps everyone could be able to hear Stephen T. Steve Topping at a proposed open house. Regarding the aforementioned email, I don't feel that he is saying every set of stairs would not cause erosion, and I also believe that on an erosional beach, which is the northern beaches are, then adding structures needs to be looked at closely. Did all members of the SAC receive the email? Did all members of the SAC receive the email? I don't think I personally received that as a SAC member until the beginning of August. In the meeting, "Structures could cause erosion and destabilization," is what I understood from listening to him myself. So perhaps he needs to be here to clarify what he wrote in that email, and that that would be helpful for RM, the RMS, they make their decisions. Continuing regarding the science, I have received a response from a geomorphologist, sorry, geomorphologist, familiar with our beaches as they were involved with the studies at the time, to comment generally on what would happen if there were structures placed every fifty to one hundred feet along the length of what we know are called erosional beaches. The response I received today is, "If a beach and a bank bluff are already eroding, adding stairs over them will not help with erosion. When the slope fails, the stairs often fail too, leading to debris that needs to be cleaned up." I would also like to point out that the report says that it is recommended that the RM expand public stairs to improve equitable shoreline access and reduce the need for private construction. I suggest that the RM just focus on that. When it came up to ask if new private stairs should be built, I shared this concern of erosion that the RM had warned about for decades, and I shared the Baird Report that I had from previous committees about how these banks are at the point of failure, et cetera. Another point that Mr. Topping shared at the meeting, which showed how fragile the banks are, in that they felt that the shoreline stakeholders could have education events to learn about so many issues, which included not just cutting down trees, even watering lawns can have effects on stability near the banks. He stated this, "And these and many other things will continue to degrade these already failing and unstable banks." I've listened to many delegations recently and wanted to share some points for clarification. I've heard a few times people saying that they need to be able to get the shoreline quickly if there is a wildfire. I have received information shared about how going to the shoreline is actually the last thing someone should do in a wildfire, because oxygen can be pulled from shorelines and people can be asphyxiated. And I'm sharing that link. I also don't believe that this is part of the emergency evacuation plan that I am aware of. I have also heard that said that SAC approved the three elements that were brought forward. Instead, actually, it was decided that the voting members, that they did not think that the responsibility lies with SAC, which was discussed during the meeting on the 20th. The report was changed in several places to say that if it is the will of council to allow private structures to be built on public land, et cetera, and then there are stringent rules for what that would look like, involving the input of two different geotechnical engineers. I have heard about the members of SAC listen to anyone who is willing to provide in point, and as I explained, input, and as I explained earlier, I know of several letters that I did not receive and can only think of one that I did receive. If there are other letters, I believe SAC should read all of them and hear everyone and have at least one open house for which people can receive ample warning about, so that they can make plans to attend, and that the recommendations should be based on what the community shares, which is the process of the zoning bylaws. There's a lot of talk of legal challenges at the SAC meetings. It was confirmed by the public that, for the public, that there's no grandfather and the RM has checked, and that's what Mr. Oxworthy just said. A lot of this should have been thought through before the report was written. The voting SAC members provided input by commenting on a written document. It would have been good to receive this input from the community first and then include that input. I do think that the existing stairs need to be assessed with the criteria made by Steve Topping as soon as possible. Any talk of new stairs involves truly looking into the science, which is that those banks are near or at the point of failure, and the messages from those who are trained in this area is that anything added will just make it worse. I will end the way I started with my concern for the environment in general. If we are trying to protect the properties with the toe rocks that were added this past year, no one who's trying to protect their property should also be trying to aggravate the erosion instead of using public stairs. The least that the natural land can be disturbed, the better.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can I ask a question? Because this has come up in numerous, well, a few presentations, I should say. Where would the municipality install more public stairs? And because we, as far as I know, we don't have any access paths to use without expropriating land and without costing the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars possibly. So where do you think we could add more public stairs?
I do agree with what previous people have said in that they pointed out that they actually went and walked the length and found that that they were able to only like walk for two minutes and that the current stairs on those beaches are appropriate. So could there be extra ones added? It's something that had been written in and said to just encourage the use of the public stairs, and so that could be a possibility. I do have to say that with my aging parents, they have come with me down, actually, Mr. Kunka saw us going down on scooters that, you know, like that took them a while to get there, and they had a wonderful time at the beach, and and they were able to manage that, you know, with with some help, and also I appreciate these mobility things that are allowed to be used in the public. But but yes, so even in terms of mobility or walking, it's really not that far.
I agree, but. All right, I'll leave it there. Thank you very much, Count Council. Any other questions for Jennifer? For one, go ahead.
Jennifer, I'd like to publicly thank you for your participation on the SAC committee. Your contributions were significant. We had some engaging debates, and your perspective was quite interesting and appreciated. With respect to your comment about me not sharing particular emails, most, if I would say about ninety-nine percent of the emails that I received were directed to me as a counselor and not specifically with respect to SAC. The ones that were directed to me as SAC chairman were forwarded to you. I'll go back and just double-check, and if I missed one, that would be corrected. But the vast majority of the correspondence was directed to me as a council member. Again, thank you for your contributions. We do, we did appreciate your emphasis. Perhaps someday you'll come back, but sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments, counsel? Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Bye. You're welcome to hang around. Up next, our final presentation tonight is Margo Langdon, please.
Awesome. Thank you.
That I would like to hand out.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Nice big heart. You can show.
Can you hear me? Thank you very much, counsel. I'm Margo Langdon, speaking strictly in my personal capacity, not on behalf of the VBCOA. For thirty-two years, I practiced as a corporate commercial lawyer, including a lot of real estate development, and I've been coming to VB and loving it all my life. Tonight, I'm only going to be addressing the six main public beaches from Knott to Clovis. And I hate to have seen this, but I recently received some thinly-balmed threats not to speak upon this issue. I've consistently, since getting involved, been told not to speak about shoreline issues, but frankly, I think we should be sufficiently principled here to permit and welcome civil and rational discourse to solve this controversial issue without fear of reprisal. So first, let me get some brave misunderstandings of the law out of the way. One, Section 214 of the new zoning bylaw does not create any right to build stairs or decks on up to twenty-five percent of public land for lake access, notwithstanding what the SAC report erroneously said was confirmed, and I apologize for that. The twenty-five percent is actually a limit on the amount of any development to the extent it is even permitted. Two, since at least 1969, the VB planning scheme always prohibited private structures of any kind on our municipal banks, zoned open lands. Three, even under the new law, there is no legal right of lakefront owners to build structures on public lands or to access the beach. The lands along the bank are zoned as park and open space. Any development, oh, sorry, along the bank, any development on it, if it is to be permitted, would require both a development permit and a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit requires a public hearing for the permit to be granted. Four, the new zoning bylaw permits only legal, non-conforming uses, uses that were previously legal under the prior law. Private decks and stairs have never been legal on park and open space lands. Five, lakefront lots within the VRA are distinct parcels with lot lines, and they do not have any riparian rights. There are a few lots which included all the rights down to the water when they were originally granted, but none of these are located within the VRA. And the lot lines do not change and give you riparian rights if the bank erodes. Lastly, under Manitoba law, no rights in municipal or brown park lands can be gained by adverse possession, prescriptive easement, or squatters' rights. So like everywhere else, nobody can build things outside of their lot line, but especially on protected lands. The RM is in fact legally entitled to remove all unattractive stairs and charge all costs back to the owner. Legality aside, Victoria Beach is one of the most special and unique places in the world, maintained through a history of careful and well-considered development. Here, we have always been extremely respectful, conscientious, considerate, and egalitarian, and I always like to think we bring our best selves here. Unfortunately, lake shore issues have turned that utopia on its head. It's a simple reality that the debate runs basically down geographic lines, lake frontiers with about eighty-six lots and backwaters with about five hundred and sixty-five lots in the affected area. Not unanimous on either side, of course, but it's a very safe bet that a healthy majority opposes private stairs being permitted on public banks and beaches. To be fair, most of us might want private stairs ourselves if we were on the lakefront. My brother and many close friends are on the lakeside. But this is not about what I want or what council or the mayor may want for their friends, family, or political supporters. It is about the public's right to decide what happens on public banks and beaches, full stop. Having quickly done a small personal survey, which you have, among backwaters in the form of a petition, I was overwhelmed by the almost unanimous and passionate responses, even from some lake frontiers. Almost every single backwater wanted to sign in favor of an outright prohibition. Most also vehemently said they wanted all existing stairs and decks taken down by the RM, even though I didn't even raise or ask that. But clearly, council needs to recognize this right of stakeholders to be heard because they are the public, that the public banks and beaches are to be protected for. This proposal to approve private stairs and decks on our banks and beaches, after all, is a historic departure from anything we have ever seen at VB and which could change the landscape of our beaches forever, as was shown in the photographs. Private structures on banks and beaches have never before been legal, and that has presumably seriously limited the number until now. Then apply a common test per legislation. What if everybody did it? Private stairs were historically just a matter of convenience in a simpler time, but now we are all too aware of the potential for overdevelopment, environmental stress on our banks and beaches, of our impact in the world, social responsibility to a greater good of the whole community, democratic rights, and conscientious development. And stairs are just getting bigger for understandable reasons, but also more intrusive, and now potentially much more numerous. How would they affect beach use in high-water years when beach space becomes so precious? There must be much pent-up demand for new private stairs on the banks based on the lake frontiers trying to force council to finalize this now in a rush for new stairs to be built this year. Knott already has a lot of stairs, and more would inevitably be built, but that intensity of development would totally change the nature of the other beaches, like King Edward, Alex, and Patricia, which are virtually stair-free. Get SAC plant to greenlight new private stairs as early as this week. As hard as it is, I think we need to hit pause and consult the public in a democratic way before this fundamental change is decided for them. Nonetheless, I'm going to suggest a crazy compromise, which actually Jamie Horn also mentioned, but I'm hoping it might help end this and allow us to move on, and it's in two parts. Firstly, allow existing stairs to stay in place, subject to SAC's proposals for structural stability, code compliance, safety, and environmental analysis, and bulletproof indemnification and protection of the RM. But that would be subject to council reconfirming the moratorium on stairs and decks and passing a bylaw to prohibit the development of any further private structures on the beaches and banks from Knott to Clovis, supported by a commitment to actually enforce it, like a real RM, with meaningful daily penalties secured like taxes and removal of structures in the case of breach. And perhaps, not necessarily Knott and just Knott, could be given a one-year window for a few stairs to be built, a sunset provision, transitional, due to its unique history. But this outgoing council, at the tail end of its term, already accused of being biased and already having made up its mind in favor of more stairs, despite so much public outcry, does not have the moral authority to make such an important and long-term decision without first establishing what the majority of the affected public wants, nor does SAC have either that ability or authority. If this sort of compromise is not adopted, the issue of all existing and future private structures on all six beaches should be made the subject of a referendum or even just serve as an important election issue in next summer's election. No decision should be made until next summer, when the cottagers are all back and have a chance to vote. Anything else will seem like an intentional subversion of the wishes of the majority, and that's not the legacy this council should want to leave. Finally, I want to express my appreciation and admiration for Nancy Sarchak, who has been subject to untrue rumors as well as unjustified criticism, but has worked tirelessly and, in my view, with incredible integrity in very difficult circumstances for what she believes is in the best interest of the majority of the VB community. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thanks, Margo. Counsel, do you have any questions for Margo? I just want to clarify a couple of things. Margo, I mean, one of them, great presentation, thank you. Mind not to say that? I believe I am.
Booming on our set, too.
Yeah, well, exactly, right. There are no, I just need to clarify, there are no lakefronters trying to force council to finalize this now for new stairs to be built this year. That's not true.
Okay, sorry.
The Shoreline Advisory Committee has no authority to greenlight new private stairs. I don't know what you mean by this week. I have no reference or information on that, but the Shoreline Advisory Committee has no authority in providing recommendations.
Right.
And they, like, they are.
I understand that. And I appreciate the work that was done, absolutely a hundred percent. Yes.
And I take issue with being referred to as not a real RM. I've been doing this for fifteen years. Most members on this council have been here for eight or four years. We're doing our best with the information we have. And we are a real RM, and we are doing a lot of good things for this community, and I understand this is a divisive issue, and I'm with you. I'd like to see it non-divisive. And I appreciate some of your comments about compromise. And I appreciate some of your comments about compromise. Thank you for that.
Can I just say that I sort of meant that tongue-in-cheek? But I do think that it's the responsibility of the RM to kind of stand up for the public. And I know it's been extremely hard to enforce the unauthorized stairs and decide what to do with them because of the blowback. For many reasons, but I know the blowback would be difficult and...
On both sides of the issue, frankly. Blowback on both sides.
Or enforcing it?
Or enforcing it or not enforcing it, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, we're...
Thank you. Any other comments, gentlemen?
Margo, I want to thank you for your comments. SAC inherited a mess. A hundred years to collect, a hundred years of...
Absolutely, the full campaign.
SAC has worked very hard to develop a solution going forward. My wife will attest to the fact that I live by a common motto. I can't change what I can't change, or I can't change what has happened in the past. But let's see if we can learn from that, and SAC tried to develop a way forward to deal with the issue. But I think your compromise has some merit. It'll be a serious thought. Thank you.
And thank you. I totally understand that this is not an issue that arose this year or last year. This has been going on for decades. I can see, just because I reviewed all the legislation, it's definitely been going on since sixty-nine and by all accounts, probably nineteen-twenty-five. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Margo.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right, that ends our delegations for tonight. Oh, all right, I'm seeing some paper around the table. Can we take five minutes?
Yeah.
Be back at, please come back at twenty after nine. Gentlemen, thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, everybody. I hope you had a good stretch. We'll move on to accounts and finances. Will resolve the following list of accounts be approved for payment? Check one-three, checks one-three-six-two-three to one-three-six-six-seven in the amount of four-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Ian, would you like to move that?
Yes.
Thank you, second. Steve, thank you very much. Ian, any comments on the accounts payable?
Just a couple of ones, sort of, stood out. Two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars is being paid to All Right Construction for Moonlighted, and that's a non-cash item, so it doesn't come out of taxpayers. That's being funded by somebody donating funds for that. And then there was thirty-two-nine thousand dollars spent on the waterworks. So that's about three-hundred thousand dollars. The other hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars is just all lost small items.
Thank you. Any other comments, gentlemen? All right, hearing none of those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. All right, moving on to business arising from previous meetings. Six A, SAC recommendations moving forward. There is no resolution on the table tonight for this. We were just going to have a brief discussion. We have now heard, I believe, nineteen delegations over the last three council meetings. We have received numerous emails. We've had phone conversations, street-side conversations with residents. So my question to council is what next steps does council consider appropriate? There was some comment made by Ms. Angbert about a September seventh open house. I think I agree with her. Five days, three days, four days, it's just not enough time to do that. So I'm asking for your opinion on what you consider appropriate for next steps on this issue.
I would like to suggest that we continue to receive delegations for at least one more council meeting. Council will then need some time to review the details, but look forward to receiving all of the written submissions. I think council then should set a date, perhaps mid-October, to begin the debate on what to do with the SAC report. I also intend to go back to my SAC committee and ask them whether or not they feel further public discussion at this point is appropriate. It is within the terms of reference of the SAC committee to determine whether or not more public input is required. But in the interim period, the meeting that was tentatively scheduled for next Sunday will be postponed.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Ian.
The only thing I'd add to that is that I think Lon should at least start to take a look at this. I mean, there's two views on this as to whether we remove all the stairs or, you know, use the SAC recommendations, and maybe just a high-level review of that to think about what you'd have to do to carry out that exercise, just a quick tactical overview of that. Just think about it, because at some point, we have to start thinking about that. And then, based on that, those two sort of approaches, see if you can come up with some sort of a rough budget, what it would cost to execute that. Because where, those are the two items on the table, I think, as to, you know, whether we decide not to, whether we decide to go with the SAC recommendation or whether we are going to remove stairs. I mean, there's going to be a cost to that, I would think. But we'll get down that path once we, once we decide which way we're going to go. And then I think you should have a conversation with Curtis, the building inspector, to see how he can help move this thing along as well. So I'm just thinking, it's just high-level conversations over the next couple of weeks just to get a feel for what's going to be involved, because at some point, we will discuss this, we will decide on something, and then, what's the plan?
Again, to clarify, SAC was only in a position to make recommendations. I think what needs to happen is we need to have a vigorous debate amongst our council members about each of the questions that was raised in the SAC report and determine whether or not they're appropriate. Perhaps they should be amended in some way. You know, I think we need to have that kind of discussion. That has not happened yet, and it needs to be done. But some people have suggested we wait till next spring. I'd like this nightmare to end before next spring, I'll tell you that.
Fran?
Yeah, we have a responsibility to deal with this, whether it's to accept some or all or none of the SAC recommendations. I don't think we should be rushed, and we certainly don't want to be seen rushing into this because it requires careful consideration. And there's, there's more avenues that have to be discussed and explored. Just one isolated incident out of the hundred-and-sixty-eight structures surrounding our beach, the identification of which ones are unsafe, that's kind of a no-brainer, and deal with those. While we continue to debate whether to allow any others, but I think this is pointing towards if, if and when we decide to allow other stairs to be built, that there will certainly have to be very strict guidelines, which may make them unaffordable for many residents.
Thank you, Steve.
Safety and bank stability override the cost.
Thank you. Steve?
So I would suggest that after what we heard about the previous SAC committees and how much public consultation they had, that there needs to be substantially more. It was also suggested at the last council meeting that to have proper consultation regarding this issue, that a full, that you need to basically ask the entire voting electorate when those refer to the BBCO A and their legitimacy. So if that's what council thinks we should do, then I would suggest, as I did originally, that we have a referendum and put this issue to bed once and for all. There's an election next year. It's the perfect time to do it because they can be on the same ballot in terms of going to the building inspector and having a discussion with Curtis again. He's been of the same opinion the whole way through. That hasn't changed. It's not going to change because he is just trying to execute his job and enforce the bylaws. I would like to note that I did reach out to roughly about half of the building inspectors in the province. I started to hear back from them. It obviously takes a little while to hear back. What they had suggested, just since we're talking about the building inspectors might say here, is that, I don't know if that name, an RM, but in one particular RM, it was discovered that someone had built a shed on an underdeveloped roadway, and the matter went before council for a decision on the structure, and the permit was denied, and the building was removed. I have several that are very much in the same way, but I would like just to refer over to one in particular that was on a, it was a private structure on a private property with, that was valued at six-point-seven million dollars. And this is in West Vancouver, and the council voted to remove an illegal structure that had been erected without any permits and violated all the bylaws, and the owners had been fined fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. I'm not suggesting that we go ahead and start fining fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. I'm suggesting that, or I'm saying that this entire process has been seen in other RMs, and they have one way of taking care of it. They enforce their bylaws. This isn't a safety issue. This is any other issue. This is a bylaw issue. And Curtis, as well as any other building inspector who are professionals, will say the exact same thing, which is you need to enforce your bylaws. And so that's exactly what Curtis is going to say when we go over and ask him. We can do that. Our lawyers say that we have the right to do this, that there is no grandfather. There are no issues to this. So we can go over and we can ask for more recommendations. And I would really like, like for us to have an official letter from our lawyer and make that, make that letter public so all can read. But that is what the building inspector is going to say to us yet again.
Okay. Ian?
So the basic question is, what do we do now and what do we do in the next six weeks? I think we have one more council meeting where we allow delegations if people wish to present. I think that council has to have a hot one or so forth publicly, where we actively debate the three questions in the SAC report and then make some decisions, maybe some changes needs to be made, and then decide when to begin to enforce or implement, not implement, but implement the SAC recommendations. It's not going to happen overnight. Whatever decisions are made by council will take some time to carry them.
Ian, Steve?
The amount of consultation that was done under the, under the other SACs, what was suggested tonight, is it was substantially more than was been done by this committee. So we shouldn't be rushing for three weeks. I think that at the very least, wait until next spring, when residents all return. We can be hearing this, as we're going to hear regardless, from, from the community up until that point. But again, if we really want a full consultation, then that looks like a referendum and just put the issue to bed.
All right. Thanks, Steve. I tend to agree that we have heard nineteen presentations. I don't disagree that we should hear some at one more council meeting. Through the nineteen presentations, through the numerous emails, phone calls, and conversations we've had, we're hearing a lot of the same comments from everyone. I'm hearing very little that is new or different. So I'm not sure why or how extending the conversation, extending the timelines is going to give us any new information to, to make a decision on. I appreciate that the members of this community want to speak on this, and they are, and we are this week, and we are receiving a lot of emails. So I'm not sure how much more we should hear that will be, or will hear that will be different from what we've already heard.
I was just thinking, don't even mention, but, you know, read into the SAC recommendations in detail. We meet, you talk about what you like and what you don't like, brainstorm some new ideas, different things. Maybe come up with a council proposal as to how you want to manage this, and then make it public for feedback on that, whether you have public hearings or information sessions or more delegations. Maybe do that in the spring next year. But in the meantime, like, we can do our due diligence. I could walk around the beach, take photos, get exactly what they look like, where their acts and their letters. Do lots of work over the winter, and then in the spring, put that out to public and get more feedback coming. I would suggest that after hearing Jennifer's presentation, that there is a substantial amount that the SAC has not heard and information that needs to be discussed.
I'm not sure I can agree with that. Jennifer was an active participant in the SAC committees, the numerous meetings that were held, and her point of view was listened to. I'm not sure if she has any specific thinking. There was some discussion about, you know, involvement with the Matee Federation, and we welcome that, so I'm not sure where that issue's going.
She had mentioned that there were several people that she knew of that, whose letters did not get to the SAC. She had raised quite a bit of things that Steve Topping has said, which I'm hearing two stories, and I need to know what that engineer has said. She mentioned the review of Baird, what other SAC committees have discussed, the fact that she has been on, on so many of them. She brought up how fragile some of the banks are. I haven't heard any of that from, from this particular report in addressing the types of things that she was addressing tonight. So I would suggest that there's quite a bit.
I think, Steve, that SAC was not tasked with determining how fragile the banks were. They were tasked with determining how, what, if any, process council could put in place to deal with our current conditions, past, present, and future. I'm sure Mr. Topping had some comments on it, and I would respect his opinions. But I, I'm not, I'm not willing to throw SAC under the bus. These are people who volunteered to be on our committee at our request. They put their names forward, and I think they deserve to be commended for what they've done for us so far and how they're willing to help us move forward. However, they don't have authority. They're giving us recommendations. So I just hope we would listen to them and not make any of them throw their hands up in the air and say, why bother? If council's not going to listen to what they asked us for. And I think we have to, we have to listen to all sides. And contrary to popular belief, I have been listening to all sides. And I think we have a lot of information that we need to take some time to review because there have been some great comments made on both sides.
Council has not had an opportunity to have an active discussion about the SAC report. That's necessary. It's fairly soon.
So can we, have we had enough discussion on this tonight that we can, I think we're going forward with one more round of delegations, if possible, next week, if they come through, or the next council meeting? Okay, thank you.
And I don't like buses.
Sorry?
You're talking about throwing SAC under the bus. I don't like buses.
Sorry. Bad analogy, perhaps. All right. All right, so that was business arising. Steve, you added another agenda item?
Yeah, I think that it would be appropriate to issue an apology to the BBCO A and Nancy specifically. We have a way that we expect council members to behave towards each other that also extends to the public. Nancy has been the target of some really, really vicious attacks, completely uncalled for, and especially not indicative of... and especially not indicative of this community. And I personally feel that she was given a green light when the validity of the VBCOA came up in last, last week's, sorry, last council meeting's discussions. The VBCOA had a blind ballot election, which is not something that we can say about other committees, and we view, or sorry, other associations and municipality, and we take on those associations' discussions, and we don't, you know, we don't shun them. But for the first time, they had a blind ballot election. And we called into question her, her right to speak on behalf of her association. And I really do feel as though that questioning led to her and the VBCOA just being ostracized online and some really vicious emails that I was made aware of.
Steve, we have a code of conduct. Ms. Sartre feels that she has been wrongfully embarrassed or somehow her position negatively affected. Then I ask her to submit a complaint under the code of conduct, and then council has a proper process to review it. This is not the way to deal with the issue. Let's see whether or not Ms. Sartre has a complaint under the code of conduct.
So I'm going to be very clear. I'm not representing her. She has not asked me to do this. This is me as a council member saying that I saw behavior which was not indicative of what we should expect from, from council. And that we gave the green light for people to be trolling her. And again, she does not know that I was going to be putting this forward. But if you need me to write a, to write a complaint, I will. I don't want to do that. I would rather just simply have a matter move forward, and I think that she deserves an apology.
I'm not taking a position on council's or mayor's actions. If Ms. Sartre feels that she has a complaint, then she should be making it. I don't think it's appropriate for a council member to be raising an issue on behalf of a member of our community. All the rules, all the process.
I think Steve is trying to, he's trying to ensure that all of council is accountable for their words and their actions. My comment, my question, after Ms. Sartre's presentation, was complete, was in complete regard to the statement that she represented, the board represented, all 500 of their members with their opinion. And that is clearly not true. I did not interrupt Ms. Sartre's presentation. I did not question her validity or her authority as the chair of the VBCOA. I think Nancy, I know you're here, I think you've done a tremendous job bringing the constitution and the bylaws forward and being the head of this committee. I think you've made great strides, and I appreciate the work you're doing. But I could not abide by hearing that. For instance, if I have, if I stand up here and say, as mayor, I know that I represent 2,000 property owners' opinions, and they're, and they all agree with me, I would, excuse me, I would be pilloried. And it would not be true. So that was my question. I don't believe it was not a valid question, I believe it was quite valid. What I do, what I would like to say to you, Nancy, is there was no intention for you, or I, frankly, to be trolled, to be stared at, glared at, sworn at, sent hateful emails. I'm receiving them too. It's not what I want in this community, it's not what I expect in this community. And frankly, it's happening all too often, and we're all human. We all have emotions, and you have always been a great speaker and a great proponent for the VBCOA. My concern this time was your last two comments said you speak on behalf of hundreds of property owners with your opinion, and that's...
Can I just clarify what I really said? I said I have a mailing list of 500 members. I never said that I represented the opinion of every single member. And I really need you to re-watch that, because I never made that claim. We understand in our association that there are multiple points of view, and that we cannot speak to all those points of view, that we speak first and foremost to our mission statement and our mandate. I never claimed to represent and speak for 500 people.
You said you spoke for hundreds on their behalf, not now, not ever.
Well, that's quite possible. I didn't say 500, but hundreds of people.
You said hundreds of...
Oh, that is possible. Absolutely, that was possible.
But I apologize, Nancy, if my comments...
I'm not looking for an apology, honestly. I felt that it was, you know, it was part of the process, and that's how you wanted to address the VBCOA for your own purposes, then...
Okay, we can stop there. Yeah. I'm trying to be as balanced as I can. I have listened to every, every presentation. I've gone back to the video, I've watched the videos, I've gone back for clarification. I have read every form letter in case someone brings up new points. I beat myself up after every council meeting for things I could have, would have, and should have said. But I think I'm going to be accused of bias. There are, there are members of this council who obviously, obviously also have a bias. And that is not being addressed, nor that, nor should it be, I guess. But Nancy and I are taking the heat for our opinions and our comments. And I would like it to be a little more pleasant, unfortunately, but I don't think that's going to happen. But I have been shunned on the street. I have been spoken to several meters away, hoping that I would hear what they say, but not directly. I've been told to resign, I've been told, like, I'm sure you're getting all sorts of nasty things said to you, to Nancy, and I don't, I don't wish that on you, I don't wish that on me. And frankly, if people want to run for election, in the next election, I would happily talk to you about the good things and the bad things that elected officials put up with. And that's part of the job, but it's getting a little out of hand. And I'm human as well, Nancy is human as well, none of us deserve this. And we're trying to do the right thing, so I'll get off my soapbox. All right, anything else, gentlemen, under business or all-forming correspondence or information?
Yes?
Go ahead.
As was mentioned earlier, Jennifer Engberg has resigned from, or chose not to go forward on the SAC committee. She was a member of the VRA non-shoreline council position. We are looking for someone to fill that vacancy. If you're interested, please send me a brief resume outlining your mainly community activities and indication of why you might like to participate on SAC. So what will happen is, once we, a reasonable time has gone by, when council will have received the, the resumes, we look forward to having a number of people step forward to volunteer. Someone to replace Jennifer, it's going to be tough to fill her shoes, she did an excellent job.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
Just quickly, since we have so many people here, if you guys know of, well, if you have doctors, please let them know that if they get in touch with me, that they can come here next summer to, you know, be with our, with our doctors committee. Because the more doctors that we have here, the safer we can make the community. So yeah, please just refer them over to me, and then I'll try to get them registered for next year.
On that point, Steve, if any of us can come up with any doctor recommendations for you, based, you know, we first of all find out that they're really serious or not. Would you or the committee then write to them with a formal invitation?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Were you short doctors this year, Steve? Or was it just, I know you had some nurse practitioners, which were fantastic as well, but were you, did you have any weeks that were empty?
I don't think so, there isn't one, and I think I got to fill it the last second. But yeah, I mean, everything went smoothly. And so far, yeah, there were, there were no issues this year whatsoever, even the cleaning.
Even what?
Even the cleaning. There were a couple of years that were, yeah, we had to go in and clean afterwards. But this year was really kind of, yeah, it was great.
Okay, good, thank you. Brush pickup starts in all areas on October 13th. So I've already seen brush pails out there, they should not be put out until September 15th, please. Until October 12th, and then on October 13th, the RM will start picking up. There's a fire Samar initiative on Saturday, October 4th, around the Moonlight and the Rec Director's Cottage. All able-bodied volunteers are welcome, starting at 9:00 a.m. I believe the ready date is Sunday, October 5th. School tax petition update to date, we have 933 signatures. And the petition is still available for signature at the VB golf course until Thanksgiving. A small community committee met on Monday, or Sunday of the August long weekend to discuss an upcoming letter-writing campaign to provincial elected officials. A template, template letter and some talking points that interested residents can use. When that communication piece is ready, residents will be advised in some question how to access it, possibly through our Facebook page or our website or VB Connect message. A message to the legislative assembly is to remove education funding and taxation from property taxes and find a fair and equitable way to fund education in Manitoba. There has been no request to decrease education funding. That is not what we're asking for. We're asking for a fair and equitable way to fund education in our province. There's a couple up here with some empty lines, if anybody wants to sign tonight, if they haven't already. Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
We'll move to adjourn, we have resolved the September 2nd, 2025, regular meeting of council, now be adjourned. Next meeting will be on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, 7:00 p.m., Torzich, at the social scene, number 318. They have a meeting. Thank you. Steve, second Ian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, thank you for the presentations.